All right, I'm going to call the Willetts City Council meeting this April 10th at 6:30 p.m. to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Connie, would you like to read us?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Connie, here. Strong?
Here.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Present.
Mayor Rubius? Present. All right, our next order of business is public communication. The city council welcomes input from the audience. In order for everyone to be heard, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes per person, and that members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. So it's at this time if you have an item that you would like to address council on that is not on the agenda, you're welcome to step up to the podium there, and if you don't mind stating your name for the record, that's helpful, and you have three minutes to speak, and the city council cannot comment or take action on any item that you present during this time.
Can you hear me? Do I just talk like this?
So that microphone is going to be for the audience that's watching from TV, but we can hear you just project a little.
Okay.
Yeah.
My name is Rosamund Crowder. I thank you for this opportunity to address you. I live in the Ridgewood Park subdivision, South Willets. First, I'd like to thank you for hiring EBA Engineering to study the possibility of arsenic, arsenic migrating into the Elias well. I look forward to hearing the results in July. Last year, I filed a Public Records Act with the city for a copy of an agreement regarding the city's water right to Centennial Reservoir. At a Water Committee meeting, Public Works Director Scott Herman told me there was an agreement with CDFW that superseded the original written water rights agreement. The official reply to my PRA was that there was no such agreement on record. At a meeting in September, the city of Willetts staff, Trout Unlimited, various agency representatives, and community members, I brought this subject up again. At that time, Scott Herman stated that there was no document because the agreement was verbal. Although this is highly irregular, I would still like to know what the verbal agreement is. I would appreciate having it written down, and if possible, who at CDFW the agreement was made with. And it's possible it was not with CDFW, it was with Department of Water Resources and the Water Rights section of Water Resources. So I have filled out another PRA to request that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Waters.
Thank you.
My name is Kirk Lumpkin. I'm on the board of the Willetts Environmental Center. I am not here to make an official comment for the Willetts Environmental Center, but to make some comment on matters that we are concerned about. Though we were not happy to hear that on September 13th of last year, the city of Willetts admitted it is not in compliance with its California Department of Fish and Wildlife's required water releases from Morris Reservoir into Davis Creek, we do thank you for being honest about this. But this admission brings up other questions the city should publicly answer, and please do not keep this information from the public, it should be our right to know these things. How long have the city been out of compliance with dam releases required by your water rights? How far is the city out of compliance with the quantity of water it was supposed to be releasing? Do you intend to resume making the required dam releases? What exactly are the dam releases required by your water rights? This question again brings up what Rosamund Crowder just spoke to you about. She made a Public Records Act request, a PRA, for your written water rights, and was told by staff there was no written agreement, only an oral one, and they were thus not obliged to give us any information. Well, I still suspect that they were probably not telling us the truth and attempting to dodge the city's obligation to respond to a Public Records Act request in a meaningful way. Regardless of whether your water rights exist in written form or not, the appropriate governmental response in the interest of transparency and in support of your local community would have been to tell us what releases you were required to make. I have one additional question. The city has recently considered requests from the Sherwood Band of Pomodians, the Pine Mountain Community, Trout Unlimited, and perhaps others to use city water. Why does the city of Willetts think it is appropriate to consider further commitment of its water resources when it is already not keeping up with the water rights commitments which significantly predated these things that you've been talking to entities about recently? Doesn't make any sense to this citizen. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public that wants to address us? Okay, hearing no other comment, we will move on to...
Can I just make a comment about...
You can't.
Oh, not even...
You should not be addressing items that are not on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought we could comment if we...
We shouldn't. We shouldn't be. It does say in our policy... I know that sometimes that has broken, but we have gone over our policies to ensure that that does not happen, and that everyone is treated the same and fairly. If a council member wants to comment on anything during their portion under city council announcements, communication, and reports during that period, you're welcome to make any comments or statements you want. So it's not that you can't, you just have to do it under a different item, if you so choose. Enactment of ordinances, we have nothing. We also have no public matters before us. We have a light agenda this evening. Consent calendar, we have one item before us, that is the March 27, 2024 minutes of the meeting. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I, so, I do...
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment from the audience? Nobody? All right, I'll call for the vote.
I just, I gave Dolores a slight correction on one item that didn't say the subject...
Is it a typo? Type correction?
There was a couple type corrections. I got your name with an S in a couple places, and then I needed to add Van Lane to the description of one of the items.
Yep, there was an item that talked about Van Lane Hotel, but didn't...
The Van Hotel.
Didn't say that it talked about the Van Hotel. That was all.
Are you okay with amending those typos?
Yes.
And we have an agreement, Madge?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't here, but I think I can vote on it, right?
As long as you read it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rubius? Yes. All right, the motion carries. Five oh. Monthly activity reports, we have none before us today. We also don't have any commission, agency, or authority business today. So moving along, we have the city manager report, and I will turn it over to city manager Brian Bender for our first item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the item that the council is considering tonight is a working list of projects that the council, that staff has identified and has put forward for your consideration for use of the ARPA funds that the city has received. Once again, ARPA is basically the federal stimulus project, funding that came out of COVID relief program at the federal level. Basically, this is a one-time application of funds that the city has received, like I said, from the federal government, and the council has an obligation. You have three steps here. You can be nice and generous and send it back to Washington DC, which you would be the first community in the country to do, and we're not recommending that. The second one would be to look at projects, and that is what is being asked of you tonight, to create a working list, and then we will compose a final budget that you would adopt, and that would be a mini-program with its own budget and its own project expectations for completing the projects. And then the third item is that you could take some of the funds and allocate it for revenue loss, and we can plug it back into our system. Right now, that's how it's sitting in our accounting process, is basically this is a payment received by the... Basically, it was fed, the money came from Washington DC, then came to Sacramento, Sacramento dispersed it to the city. We are asking the council to consider putting together a list of viable projects that meet the criteria of the spending program, and that is what is before you today. So the council had an opportunity to look at a much more extensive list. That list had exceeded to about $5 to $6 million. We have 1.1, and so there's a little bit... And then the revised list right now is about 1.9, so some consideration is going to be necessary to get down to the working budget cap of about $1 million to have some overages thrown them into the budget. And like was noted by the mayor tonight, the way things fell, this is the only item that we can spend some time deliberating on the value of the project, the merit of what they would achieve, and kind of the logic behind some of the projects. If you notice through that table, the projects were identified, if they accomplished a capital improvement project, an item that was identified through budgeting from the council, is a recommendation and an adopted plan, or if it's an item that staff presented and recognized it's viable for consideration.
So, could I ask a clarifying question? You had said narrow it down to one, when there was 1.9. The last time we met as a budget committee, I wasn't hearing about a $900,000. Are we now thinking that having done some of the deferred maintenance, that we're going to land closer to the $900,000 deficit for this fiscal year? I'm trying to figure out how you... Where's your 0.9?
We received 1.1 million.
1.1?
Yes. And this list right now is 1.9. What I'm asking for, if the council can reach consensus on a range of projects from the mid-900s to about a million, because I want to go back and I want to verify some of these price estimates, just to give some fudge factor.
I think I misheard you, that's why I was clarifying. Okay.
That's what would help me, because as I was wrapping my head around this, if we, as we discuss this, I don't know if it would be easy to have somebody keep a tally, so that if we say we want something that's $400,000, well, that knocks a lot of things out of the ballpark as we start to pin things out. Otherwise, I could want this and want that, but then, once $200,000, once $300,000, and then...
Yeah, I mean, there's two large items in there that easily exceed the others, and they're basically, you can pick and choose, you can cut them down or pair them back, or you can just eliminate them. If you eliminate those two items, you're going to cover everything on the list. And, once again, let me be clear, if the council wants to introduce an item that this list jarred your thought process and you want to present it, fine. There are other options that could be brought forward, too.
Shall we, as a group, do you want to start with the items that maybe are items that aren't on the top of your list? Because I imagine if these are the top items that came up from conversation that the city manager had with each of us independently, without us having that conversation together, that there must be some commonality between them. So maybe finding out what isn't common between us and having discussion about the merits or the lack of merits of those items might be helpful. So we could go down the table without a lot of discussion, I'm thinking, and just throw out what those are. We can track them and see if there's some commonality on those items. Does that sound reasonable?
I do have a question before we go in item by item, and that was the added item of the...
The West Van Lane...
Yeah, exactly. And that doesn't have a cost estimate on it, so I was wondering how much does that potentially...
Are you able to secure... I was talking to Dusty Billy about that, and the West Van Lane improvement, did you ever, were you able to track down a cost on that?
No.
No?
It just seems to me that's going to be a fairly costly item as well, and so that changes how much we have to digger the rest of them, if we want that.
Unfortunately, as this was being prepped, Taylor Perry, the senior planner, has been out of the office the last couple days. She's the one who's been advocating, she's the one who recommended it, so it's kind of her project. So we threw it on there. If the council is uncomfortable with it, it also could be targeted for Measure K as well.
So if we could start with councilmember Connie, could you tell us which items that you would like to have discussion over, that sell on the bottom of your list?
I don't have any particular item that I want discussion over. I think that these are all items that have been identified by the council and by community members over the years. They're all worthy of some sort of implementation. I do think it's interesting to note that, as Brian said, the two largest items, number seven and number 10, if you knocked those off, we could accomplish everything else on this list, and then we could look for alternative sources to tackle those two big ones, alternative funding sources. Otherwise, yeah, I think it's going to be kind of complicated for us to sit here and go through all 17 and find consensus, and, you know, I don't feel comfortable at all voting on number 17, the West Van Lane, without any kind of a price tag. Yeah, it's a great idea, and it's something that was talked about at Revide Ed years ago, but without a price tag, it's not even something to reasonably consider for this round of funding. Yeah, those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Strong?
Yeah, it is hard to do this on either item by item, and in fact, it's already been done in the conversations we had, and Brian has, you know, listed how many yeses and nos, and maybes there were. So we've sort of already done that as individuals, and I think it comes down to, I think what Greta was just saying, is how do we narrow it down to what we could afford, given the funding source that we have?
Well, I think that is the point. Given the funding source that we have, what items would you consider that you would narrow off the list?
There was only, I think, one out of the 17 that I thought, nah, I'm not particularly... I don't think it's that important to me, might be important to other people, which had to do with having broadband or having Wi-Fi in the parks. I thought, people can go to the park and not look at their phones, and they can enjoy the park, and they can have Wi-Fi at various other places. That was about the only one that I just said, eh, I really don't feel like funding that one. There's one or two others, and I forgot to bring my list, I'm sorry to say, but mostly my thought was to scale back the large ticket items, not try to do them all in one, at one time. And sort of what Greta was just saying is, maybe we can get some alternative funding sources for some of those large, you know, $500,000 items, and just do a portion of them under ARPA, and then try to schedule the rest later. So that's my insight onto it.
Thank you. Can I have one more? Sure.
It is interesting to note that the one that Madge mentioned, the Wi-Fi installed, three councilmembers said they didn't want to fund that, and the same thing was true of the side-by-side vehicle. Three councilmembers said they didn't want to fund that. So those two add up to $26,000. If we wanted to, we could, if, since the majority of council seems to say we are not excited about that for this funding source, we could nix those and then throw $26,000 towards one of the larger projects, at least as seed money for one of those.
Is the Wi-Fi for personal use, or is the intention for security?
It would be for both. Definitely for, the main focus would be to accommodate the public, to have access to Wi-Fi, to create hotspots there. It also would increase our capability to install security camera systems.
Okay. Stransky, what do you...
Mine is number 10 and number 15, the Wi-Fi and the Rec Grove.
Those are your low?
Yeah.
Your lowest?
Yeah.
Number 10 and number five?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. And then Vice Mayor?
A question, I know that part of this was to make us whole. Are we whole now on our utilities that we didn't have paid during the pandemic? I mean, are we...
The water bills?
The water bills, did we have an alternative? I thought we had an alternative funding from the state or something.
There's a grant that helps out with individuals who are having difficulty with water. For account holders, it's available to them.
Oh, okay, but, so we're whole at this, at the moment from that, so we're not looking for money there? Do you want me to... Yeah, okay. All right, that was a question I had. And I just want to say I kind of agree with the logic so far, as far as...
If I may, to self-frame the discussion, regarding the Rec Grove improvements, and Dusty, you can back me up on this, the organization is working diligently on implementing, and some of you heard about the Caltrans Beautification Grant Program. So we are putting a lot of effort into our parks that were nominated through that grant, so maybe we take a step back from Rec Grove, complete the other improvements that we're looking at. There are some improvements slated for Rec Grove itself, but the main focus is the City Parks slash Schneider and then Babcock. So maybe what the recommendation is, is the council leans away from Rec Grove, let us implement our one grant program, and then let's see how that, how successful we are, and then look at Measure K for park improvements.
Was that, was Rec Grove on your list?
You know, at this point, I can't remember. I was actually trying to figure out which one I voted on, but I talked to Brian.
Okay.
I think the happy is that, yeah, I know when I went through it, I just kept thinking, well, this sounds good, but, you know, I need to have a tally to take money from.
In terms of this evening, though, is Rec Grove on your, the bottom of your list?
Well, I didn't think about alternative funding at the time, so if I did vote for it, then I would be willing to...
We'll just put it on...
Jerry did support Rec Grove.
So, but I'm willing to take one for the team if we've got all the alternatives.
Okay, I'll put you down with a maybe, how's that?
And another thing to help guide the discussion here, a lot of the council members basically said, you know, we want to have this discussion among all of you in the same room.
Right.
There might be, you know, I can see the vision of it and maybe not, I just want to hear other opinions. And when I met with each one of you individually, I said this is what some council members said and some, you know, support they conveyed to that individual project. So I think this is a good opportunity for you to air your support for a project, or, you know, what was the thought behind it, why you would value a project over another one?
So, on the bottom of my list was Van Lane, because we don't have a dollar amount...
Fair enough, that's fair.
And I would hope to use some other funds that might be available. I did drive down Van Lane, and it is in bad shape and in need of repair. I'm just not sure that this is the right...
Sure. There's no wide-roaring answers to this. Let's make that the key.
I'm sharing my thoughts. The utility bill, billing audit, was something that I didn't want to spend the ARPA funds on, and then there was...
You did, or didn't?
Did not, did not. And I believe that had a variable cost on it, an unknown cost as well on that one, if I recall?
Yes.
Yes. And then the community programs, the only one on there that I was uncomfortable with was EDFC, because if you look back over the course of the last 10 years and you see what is EDFC given to our community, and I know that we make an annual contribution, I didn't feel like this had the same merit as the food bank or the senior center. We haven't seen the same level of impact in our community from EDFC, so $25,000 additional, you know, public dollars didn't feel merited, in my opinion. So those were all, that's all I have. We'll open it up for just general discussion. Go ahead.
Just a little additional thing, not about the bottom of my list, but regarding energy audits and those kinds of upgrades. I think it's very possible that those end up being cost savings over the long haul, because if we reduce our energy demand, we reduce our energy bill, and energy costs are going up rather quickly now. So as part of refining this list, if there's any way to kind of identify what the potential cost savings might be over a period of, you know, 10 years going into the future, if we implement some of the auditing and energy efficiency recommendations, I think that that's, in the long haul, really to our advantage. So those are part of my reasoning.
I can see, yeah, no, I see the, I see the value in that. My only concern was is that it had an unknown dollar, and I know that the city has already been undertaking on multiple, on multiple times since I've been on the council, we've already done some energy audits, and I know how much time it took from staff to do those energy audits, and I just wasn't feeling like another energy audit may be the best use of these funds when we just did one three years ago, two years ago. It hasn't been that long.
Just on this note, Walter, do you, you have some, from your work with PG&E, there are subcontractors on this item?
Yeah, we have a meeting, an upcoming meeting with PG&E. There are several programs that conduct the energy audits with contractors that they fund, and most of it would be not with any funds from the city. So we're looking at that right now, at several programs that are set up for cities and municipalities with full funding from PG&E to take care of the energy audits and make improvements. And like you said, energy prices are going up considerably, so it would be really incumbent on us to look at those, the savings could be really big for the city. And they're looking, we're looking at getting a professional services agreement with one of these companies that's approved by PG&E, to look at the whole city and all of our facilities overall, at the improvements we can make. And they provide all the grants, they do all the work on that, and in the end, most of the time, most of the cities do not pay anything. Right now, Brook Trails is a little bit ahead of us, looking at energy savings for all their facilities with the same company, with Climatex, and we're meeting with them next week to look at this, and we'll provide a report shortly to the board, the city council, looking at what we can come up with, you know.
That's an ideal situation. Councilmember Connie?
I'm going to slip the difference on the comments that you both made and say I strongly support the energy audits, especially in light of what Walter has just revealed, and I agree with your comments, I do not support $25,000 to EDFC.
I have kind of a suggestion, because I forgot about our ongoing contributions to EDFC. But in light of that, could we use, out of that community's, the community services amount, plug in the museum instead? Or something towards...
Going to the county, though?
Well, I don't know, our contribution, I guess that's, and I guess that's the part that I'm kind of torn, how do we fund something...
What if we had a $25,000 fund for other things that people have come directly to council? We've talked about beautification and art projects, and often people come to us with an art project, like the installation over on Highway 20, and we don't have any funds set aside for that type of a project.
But do we have to spend it, though? That's the only question I have. We can't put it in a kitty to use for that, right? We have to actually identify it?
Yes, you're going to have to spend it out within about three years.
By 2026, yeah. So we would only have a two-year period to identify a project and expend it, but if we leave it slightly broad enough, we shouldn't have a problem, you know? If it was the promotion of arts in our community, and the project had to be approved by the Arts Committee, that leaves it somewhat broad enough that in two years...
So, I mean, the other thing with the, you know, the spending, basically you can approve a budget and say that... a budget and say that whatever group or entity that you wanted allocate funds for, you have allocated those funds, you spent those funds, you gave it to a entity for their dedicated purposes. So you met the criteria.
Or just remove the 25,000 from the list of expenditures. That's easy enough, too. Would there be any objection from this council on removing that, that expenditure, that line item?
I don't, I don't really object, but I do think that we have been under our population share in contributing to the EDFC effort, and I know that they are trying to diversify, they have had at least one or two loans in Willets in the last several years. I agree, however, that it's part of our annual support for them. I just, I, I think we're a little bit below what our fair share would be.
But don't you think we're also below our fair share of loans?
That is probably true, and I, you know, that's why I said I don't really object to taking that item out. I, I agree that our senior center and our food bank and so forth are really, are very tangible community benefits to us, and I really strongly support that, and I, I can see the logic of prioritizing that. So I agree.
Connie?
Dusty, does the Clean California Grant include any funds for new streetlights on Main Street, the sort of pedestrian-scale ones that we had talked about off and on for years? Or do we have a funding source identified for those?
Yeah, we, we do. So the Clean California Grant is going to support a number of solar streetlights, the decorative style, along Main Street from approximately East Valley Street, at least up to Commercial Street. And we're working with Caltrans and getting a lighting plan together, and if there's an opportunity to extend lighting, those streetlights even further up to State Street, essentially North Borough Brewery, then we're exploring that option, too, provided we can stay within the budget allocated within the grant.
Is there any funding in that grant for either flower, hanging flower baskets to go on those lights, or brackets to hold, for instance, the banners announcing the graduates each year?
So certainly, we're, we'll have the brackets there, but the actual, like flower pots or banners to hang off of the, the new decorative streetlights, no, that's not within the budget.
So that might be something to consider using $25,000 for. I've heard from multiple community members how much they love those banners at high school graduation time, listing all of our graduates. We didn't do them last year. I know there's been some difficulty with brackets on our current Cobra-style lights.
They're not our lights.
Right, they're the PG&E lights. So if there's an opportunity on the new ones coming in to install something permanent that will allow an annual display of banners celebrating our community's kids, I think that would be a good thing for us to consider. And then I've also heard from multiple people, especially during the Main Street planning efforts, how much they want beautification on Main Street, they miss Jenny Watts's flowering petunia baskets, and if we have new, new streetlights, there might be an opportunity for something there.
Okay. Any further comment from the public, I can, or from the council before I open it up to the public? No? Okay, at this time, I'm going to take it out to the public, and does the public want to address us on this item? If so, you have three minutes at the podium.
I'll say some.
We do appreciate you being here on this beautiful evening.
My name is David Beebe, I live out of town, I've been here about almost 50 years now. The main thing you guys could do that would really help in this town is fix the bathrooms in both the parks. Make decent bathrooms. Make foot-on timers that are locked at a certain time, open at a certain time, wherever the cops come in, or the park department comes in. Put decent bathrooms in. These are the worst bathrooms of any park, any city I've ever been in, in Willets. Who wants to use these bathrooms? Nobody does. That's why they're pissing and shitting all over town. So why not fix the bathrooms?
So since this is an agendized item, I'll let Dusty give you some clarifying information on that.
So, yeah, more, more love to Caltrans and, and giving us the Clean California Grant. So just to brag a little bit, in case you're not aware, Mr. Beebe, the, the city competed in a statewide competitive grant series called the Clean California Grant. 18% of applicants around the state got funded, and the city got nearly $3 million of that. And so we just talked about how a portion of that fund is going to go to support new streetlights, a portion of that fund is going to go to rehab the bathroom over here at, at Rec Grove. So, yeah, so it's going to be like a new roof, epoxy floors, some, some new locks that self-lock, new fixtures, yeah, a water fountain on the side, just that kind of stuff. So not, not the Taj Mahal, but certainly.
The bathrooms that are clean that you'd be proud of. My family comes to town, I'm not going to send them there. We wouldn't come use a bathroom in this building when it's open. Or we would down with the apartment, so I have a key to use that bathroom.
Right.
We're not going to use these bathrooms, they're ours.
All right, thank, thank you, thank you for your comments, and thank you, Dusty, for giving some clarification that we do have improvements coming to the two bathrooms that were referenced.
Well, that's what it's said for years, we've got all these little studies that have been down in the communication.
So, sir, I did give you, I did give you your time at the podium, and I did explain that, what the update is in terms of bathrooms. Yeah. All right. Any other members of the public? If not, I'm going to bring you back up here, we'll close the public portion. All right, further discussion? So we, it sounds like we're in agreement on the EDFC. Are we in agreement on Van Lane? Are we of the consensus that we're going to wait on that and look for other sources of revenue to potentially address that problem? Any objections?
I would, if the staff comes up with a more specific, with, with the cost estimate and how that could fit in with the rest of these projects, I, I think it's a great project. So if it turns out.
We can always bring it back.
Yeah, okay. I don't want to throw it out, that's all. But, but I agree, it's, it's not ripe, it's not ready for us to deal with yet.
Yeah. So if I understand you correctly, though, we can bring the project back, but we're not going to bring the project back to revisit it as ARPA funds, because we're discussing what we're allocating those funds for this evening, correct?
Actually, no, I would, I was, my thought process was if the council creates a viable working list from, from the items before you tonight, we can do, what my plan was, was to bring back a more formalized budget, you know, pencil out some of these numbers a little tighter, so we have a good understanding what the expenses would be. At that time, we could throw back West Van Lane into the mix, with a cost estimate, and you can say, well, yeah, that's fine, we like it. No, we don't like it. It's, it's not right now, it may be another project through another, another funding source.
So this isn't really about a final budget allocation plan, then? We're just?
It's another cutting.
We're just discussing this evening, it's not a, I was under the impression that this was a final budget allocation, because that's what it says right there.
Um, it's, but the memo.
I'm a little confused about the haziness of what we're doing this evening.
Well, it's, it's getting to the final. The, if you read the staff memo, it basically indicates what the process here is, and what we're asking the council to do, is to get down from 1.9 to $1 million. And if you can do that tonight, then a budget will be re-presented to the council, and you'll take another look at it, you have another opportunity to weigh the measures of what you're looking at, and then take final action on that budget. Now, that budget can always come back and you say, we want to drop something, or a project that the council approved came in higher than expected, once we got into the nuts and bolts of it. Do you want to go ahead with that project, or you want that removed and put to a fund somewhere else?
Can I?
Go ahead.
You know, I, I guess with the Rec Grove, I'd like to leave some money there to allow you guys to, to position, but I also kind of feel like if we could shave some of the Rec Grove money out and allow you to have some, in case you need some funds to add in. I mean, it's kind of like, originally I, I supported the Wi-Fi earlier, but not so much so that people can, can sit around and play on their, on their computers. I was looking at more from a community emergency during the fires, everybody crowded around the library for that, to be able to, if we had the ability to do a, I guess, a portable hotspot or something on demand, or whatever staff recommended, but I'm not married to that, so that's why I was willing to, to back off. I, I just remember during the fires, it was important, so that people in the community had communication, the outside world, but I know technology is changing and the internet's kind of a big deal all the time up there as a whole. But, but again, I think with the Rec Grove, I, I would like to leave a little money there, but just so that staff, it needs to augment or attach something for the grant or do something, because like Mr. Beebe, I don't like the bathrooms, but anything that we could do to, to make it a little more pleasant, or fencing at the park, like we talked about there. I, I want to give staff the latitude to be able to fill in the blank on something, but, and I also agree, the Van Lane thing, it's just, it's kind of like writing a blank check. I mean, if it was more exact, that's where I was having a hard time with this, if I could sit here and pare it down, if you told me, pare it down, I can cut it down.
Well, you, you are, I mean, essentially, we need to remove 800,000 to 900,000, ideally 900,000. Like was noted earlier, if you remove or you pare back those two big-ticket items with the planned implementation and Rec Grove improvements, you can accomplish everything with some surplus over. And if that's the case, we can always revisit what do we want to do with the parks? Is there a plan element that you're looking at? I think the street beautification and enhancing what's already going to be done through the Cal, Cal beautification grant is a good opportunity as well. There's merit there.
I'm just thinking 100,000 in the, I'll call it the Rec Grove park, then give you, and then take the rest out for now, and.
It's your call.
Just kind of my thought for now, to give, give staff the opportunity to plug holes in, because we, our parks do lack, and it'd be nice to come in and not necessarily depend on Measure K to, to come in for all of it, but we promised the community Measure K would help with that, but this is a one-time shot, is the way I look at this. And so if there's some one-time shot sort of things that we're going to do that are not ongoing, then this is the perfect pot of money to pay for it as opposed to ongoing things, that, that's my thought.
Okay. Strongly, Connie?
I was just going to ask Brian if, if you have enough sense of the council or feedback and on, from what we've discussed, to do the next step, to go through and fine-tune some of the cost estimates, pare down some of the things we've talked about, and then see if we're in the ballpark.
I think, you know, what is presented to you tonight, except for those two items that we're talking about, planned implementation and Rec Grove, if we take them out, or if you reduce them by half, or whatever the measure is, that is a very viable proposal we can return to you and you can ratify.
And it would be during the actual budget process that we finalize all this, or would it be a separate reset of that?
I, what I'm envisioning, that the next time you're going to see these items, it's going to be the final with a resolution and the budget.
Okay. Connie?
Yeah, I like that, that idea of its own separate budget. And I just wanted to point out that I think that what we might be losing track of a little bit is that this is very exciting for our community. We have a lot of, a lot of stuff in the hopper right now. With the Clean California Grant, there are going to be improvements to our parks that we're going to start seeing quickly. And we have Measure K funds that will be starting to be allocated once our, our audits are complete, which is coming up in the very short term. And then we also have this one-time funding from ARPA, so we have a real opportunity here to tackle some longstanding projects that the community has wished for, for years. So although we can, you know, kind of pick this apart and figure out what we want to do with this particular pot of money, there are big opportunities coming up in the very near future to see some real results, so I think we should all feel excited about this.
I'm excited. I just want to make sure that we're giving our city manager clear direction with consensus of the five of us, so that we can move forward with the plan and feel comfortable with it.
Your city manager is confident that has what you're looking for, yes.
Yeah. Well, I think we've given you some direction, but I don't feel, I'll be honest, I don't feel confident that we have collectively given you direction. I heard that, for example, you had two council members that, that didn't want the Wi-Fi. There's been some discussion over the amount of allocation to the parks. We haven't clearly stated that we want to let go of that other big-ticket item that was on here, so, I mean, could we get consensus that, that's something that we want to go ahead and take that big item off?
Well, I, I guess, let me just respond. What I was going to do was, I have my notes here, I think it was, I'm acting on when I haven't heard a objection to a council action, that essentially consensus by that council was, you know, you weren't favoring that project, or maybe it's into another category, and then those two large-ticket items. It sounds like Rec Grove had more support than the planned implementation. And so what I was thinking, looking to do was to pare that back significantly, the planned implementation, because we have heard it a couple times from the council. We're, right now, we're planned out, or, you know, but this would have been implementing some of the strategies.
I guess I'm just wanting to hear from my fellow council members, because I didn't get the opportunity, you know what I mean, to, we didn't get an opportunity to sit down one-on-one, so just making sure that in fact we all, that, that is what, I don't want anybody to be upset later that they weren't on board with the process, or that they didn't understand it. So just trying to make sure that we're all in agreement, that in fact, this is the direction that we're given. I'm trying to make sure the direction's very clear.
So if, my understanding is that we would consider removing the two large-ticket items, which are the Rec Grove improvements and the planned implementation. If we remove those, and I do a rough estimate here, we're at about just over 700,000. So that means there's still some room in the ARPA funding. So Brian can finesse the numbers, figure out what he can come back to us with, and say we can put X amount towards either, you know, Rec Grove or planned implementation, or a little bit towards both, but once he has the numbers finessed, he can offer that. And then anything that is not agreed to for ARPA funds, it's not like we're saying we don't ever want that to happen, we're saying let's look at that for a different funding source.
But what you summarize is exactly what I was stating, that we needed as a council.
Okay.
And that we need to come to an agreement, that we all agree with that, so we can move forward, because sometimes we come to an agreement, and then later, things come up that there wasn't enough discussion, or that there was some unclarity, and now is the time for any discussion to take place, and it later, it's very clear.
Would you like to take a vote on whether that's an appropriate strategy?
You know what, if you'll make that a motion, I'll second your motion.
Okay. I move that we adopt this ARPA loose recommendation of projects minus 7 and 10, with the understanding that either or both may come back to us once the numbers are finessed.
No, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any clarifying questions or comments from any council member?
I heard a couple of comments, including mine, not removing them, but scaling them back so that the total was within our budget. So, and I think that was more of the, you know, so instead of just saying, we eliminate those two, and then maybe we add some back, just say that they get scaled back in order to make the budget.
Yeah, that way, for example, like my suggestion about the park, if he felt that he needed 50,000 for the park, or some kind of.
Is that acceptable to the maker of the motion?
That is acceptable. I am also for the stipulation that we remove the 25,000 to EDFC.
Yes.
That's their clarity. All right, and so I'll open it up to the public now that there's a motion on the table. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address us now that you've heard a motion?
Who's that a question?
Unfortunately, you've got to step up there.
What is EDFC?
Go ahead. Madge sits on that, that board.
It's the Economic Development and Financing Corporation, which is a nonprofit that provides loans to businesses throughout the county. It also serves Lake County as well, and it's to try to maintain and develop new jobs and businesses.
Okay. Great, thanks.
And all of this is, is a direction to city management.
And all of this is a direction to city manager. It's not really, we're not adopting, that's we're directing to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And just to clarify, Rosman, the reason that I'm suggesting that we remove the funding to EDFC is because I don't have the sense that they were hit as economically hard as, for instance, our senior center, or our daily bread. And part of the reason we received this funding from the federal government is to help offset economic losses due to COVID-19. So I feel like targeting the money towards our community organizations that actually gives back to our community is a more prudent use of those funds.
And I think we're all in agreement on that. Thank you for the clarification. All right.
Can I ask that, now that Madge has offered a change, if we could repeat the motion?
Let me see if I can do this. I recommend that we give direction to the city manager to accept this proposed ARPA list, reducing items seven and 10 to fit within the budget.
And eliminate?
And eliminate the $25,000 to EDFC in item number five.
Van Lane.
And also item, eliminating item 17, West Van Lane, with the understanding that we will look at that under an alternative funding source at a later date. Did I get everything?
Except for, do you want to put in that we will continue to collaborate on the utility billing audits? Was there a dollar number connected?
There was not a dollar number connected, and then we did hear from our facilities coordinator that possibly it wouldn't have a dollar number.
Yeah.
What about the Wi-Fi at parks?
Director.
Wi-Fi at parks.
Well, that definitely eliminated, basically, you could come back with a recommendation as part of your.
Okay, I will call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Stransky.
Gonzalez. Yes.
Mayor Robert.
Yes. All right. We've now given clear consensus.
Nice job.
Of direction.
Isn't it funny spending a million dollars? Two quick verbal reports here, this as follow-up items for the council's consideration. One is the master tax sharing agreement process. There was hope and anticipation that the draft agreement, as finalized, as presented through the ad hoc committee that is working with the Board of Supervisors, was going to be on the supervisors' agenda for yesterday. It was pulled at the last minute. With the administration changes in both Port Arena and Fort Bragg, there are some concerns on those, from those two organizations about the intent of the agreement provisions, and how it would impact their, either proposed annexations, or their relationships with the city, or, excuse me, with the county. So the city managers, the four of us, are looking to have, we've been briefing each other, keeping up each other up to date on the status. We're looking to hold a meeting sometime next week to brief and see what's the status, and how we can repackage what we have from the county, and get it back before the supervisors. The goal is, what was the original goal, was to have it before the Board of Supervisors. And what we heard from the Board of Supervisors was that they were excited to move it on. They wanted to get it done. There's two supervisors on that ad hoc committee. They were committed to seeing this through. And then, once the supervisors took positive action on the item, then it was going to be routed to the four municipalities, essentially almost in the same period, maybe the next month or two, and just go through the line and get approvals and adoption, and then we'll have a document in place. Right now, that schedule is off the table. We'll have to see what we need to do to get it back on the table. So once again, this is nearly a two-year process. I say that's two years, that's years of my involvement. Some of the staff members and other communities have been working on this for decades. Like I mentioned earlier, there hasn't been a valid annexation in Mendocino County for almost 35, 40 years. Annexation has been, it's difficult for municipalities. Yes, there's been annexations where a municipality annex land for public institutional use, but that's different from actually incorporating already existing developed land that has services, or land that is going to be targeted for development opportunities. We have that. The other item relating to county coordination, there, I have no news to report regarding the museum status. There is a strategic planning group meeting scheduled for tomorrow. Hopefully, there are some updates from that time.
Any questions or comments on verbal report? Anybody from the public?
Thank you, that's what I have.
Thank you for that report. We have no department recommendations, so I'll move on to the department monthly reports presented at the second meeting of each month. So we don't have anything necessarily there. Are there any departments that have anything outstanding that they would like to bring forth? All right, hearing none. We'll move forward with the city council announcements, communications, and reports. And I'm going to start with you this evening.
Well, I did not go to LAFCO because I was out of town. And League of Cities will meet on May 3 in Riedel. So.
Yeah, that notice just came out?
Yeah, I tried opening it, it didn't work.
Oh, okay.
But I know it's May 3, probably about 1 o'clock in Riedel.
I might try to go to that one, yeah.
So, that's all I got.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Connie, you look ready.
I'm excited to attend the MCAG hosted meeting of the California Transportation Commission next week in Fort Bragg. It's quite an honor for MCAG to be hosting, and it sounds like Walter will be attending also, so looking forward to that.
I'll be presenting on some of the Willets projects.
Excellent. Wonderful. So Dusty will make some presentations. We have quite a lot going on in Willets to share with our county fellows, and Big Wiz from CTC, right? So looking forward to that. And also, just wanted to say that I had what I considered an excellent meeting today with our city manager. I feel like he is always ready to listen to my questions that I've brought up from the previous week. He often gets back to me same day, or within a day or two, with answers. And I wanted to let the community know, I have not forgotten about the derelict train cars over on Railroad Avenue, and neither has city staff. They are working diligently on that, and it looks like we should have at least some partial resolution before summer is out. So I think it's valuable to have regular meetings with the city manager and remind him of the priorities of the community, and I appreciate that he is so responsive about that.
All right, councilmember Strong?
The Sonoma Clean Power Board met the beginning of this month, and it was a fairly short meeting. Basically, the upshot is they are doing fine financially. They have a surplus which is going back into reserve, and also dividing up that extra, the positive cash flow that they have, a lot of it is going back to the customers. And they are maintaining their electric rates 7% below PGE and E's rates. So even though energy costs in general are going up, and PGE and E's share of the bill is especially going up, it's still very advantageous to our customers to be part of Sonoma Clean Power. They also are tracking all sorts of stuff that goes on in Sacramento around energy policy, but it was, you know, it's a very interesting meeting. The next two, the other two agencies that I represent us on are not meeting until early May, so I'll announce those later, because I don't have the dates in front of me. But we will be having a Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority meeting, I think it's the first, or, anyway, I don't know the date, but, and EDFC as well, Economic Development Financing Corporation. So, oh, and on non-agency matters, I was very interested in the comments that were made during public comment, and I share the concern of making sure that we are publicly transparent with how we are meeting our water rights obligations, and, or not meeting them, and what we're doing towards those goals of being, providing, being legal with our water rights, and making sure that we are adequately protecting our water resources, and have, you know, being very cautious about any commitments that we make to others who are seeking our water. And I know Larry shares that, so I wanted to just thank them for bringing that up. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that the, there were people here, I think, last meeting or the meeting before, who were very concerned with adopting a resolution calling for a ceasefire in the Gaza debacle, what's going on there. And a resolution was passed in Fort Bragg. It was brought to the city of Ukiah, and they had a fairly disastrous public hearing at which there were Zoom bombers, and it went on for something like three hours, and they ended up not taking a position on it. And the Board of Supervisors seems to be somewhat reluctant to open that can of worms. However, John Hascheck is planning to write a letter on his own personal behalf, and I am also planning to do that, to call our government to stop funding a really humanitarian crisis in Gaza, and basically implement a ceasefire and humanitarian aid. And then, of course, that would hopefully lead to some resolution of the underlying problems, which we are, as a city of Willets, are not going to influence, but just to make sure that our government, with our tax dollars, isn't funding what amounts to a horrendous humanitarian crisis there. If any other council members wish to either write their own personal letter, or join me in writing a personal letter, I'd be happy to entertain that.
Stransky?
Yes, I want to thank you, gentlemen, for bringing up the water thing. I think I've really been a vocal, one person out of the group that has checked on the water and asked different questions, and I appreciate you guys bringing that up. Thank you very much. Also, I went to the airport with Kathy and Walter, and it has been a long time since I've been there, and they've done some beautiful work there on fencing and whatever. And the new hangar that Smith has is absolutely good. If you ever want to see a real top-notch hangar, that's the place to go to see it. And it's really very nice. And thank you, Kathy and Walter, for taking me up there.
Kathy, you have good news to express on the airport?
Last month, we received our third Part 16 complaint, discussing what we charge, favoritism, things like that. Today, we did receive notification from the FAA that they have dismissed this portion of the complaint, stating that it doesn't, basically, it doesn't make any difference what we charge to this tenant. So that was, that was a big deal for us. We're very excited about it. We keep our fingers crossed for the rest of it, but that's one down, two to go.
Thank you. And my third thing was that I, it seems like everything runs together, but it was yesterday that we went with the group from Caltrans, and I went through the whole thing. We had two other council people that started out, but had other things to do. I thought it was very interesting to, and Dusty, thank you very much for inviting me and taking me for the ride. And it's my first time in an electric car, and it was, I didn't think anything great about it, but it's, obviously, the state thinks it's a great thing. Anyhow, I went with them, and I thought it was very eye-opening that the people that come through this town, there was a gentleman that was in the group that has lived in Eureka, Arcata, one of the places up there, and had gone to school in the Bay Area, and has traveled back and forth from through Willets, when it, before the freeway, and had never been off the main drag to even go down to the park, and the rodeo grounds, and all the things that were down there, and had no idea that we had all of those things that we had. And that really has to be advertised. And, and I don't know if it took Dusty off, but it was just surprising to me that somebody that had gone through here and was probably 30, do you think he was maybe 30 years old?
Probably even a little bit older.
Anyhow, that, that had never, never been off the street, and I thought that that was very great. And I appreciate going with him, and I think that it was very nice to interact with him, and we saw all the places that it needed to do, and what we needed to do. And the bathrooms were something that really they talked about, okay? I want you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. I had the three meetings this last two weeks since we last met, or, been two weeks? Yeah, about two weeks, a little over two weeks. I met with city manager and Robert Penoli. He had reached out to us, just wanting to open up conversation. We'd addressed with him a couple of community concerns about, gosh, some overgrowth, some lighting, just miscellaneous things, and just had just an open conversation. Nothing particular to report. It's always good to be able to set up opportunities where we can meet with any constituent in the community, to have an open dialogue about any type of city matters, whether it be art in the park, or restrooms, or whatnot. So I always appreciate the community reaching out. I met with Chamber of Commerce. They had their meeting. I kind of sat in, fly on the wall a bit, and just listened to see what was happening at their, I believe it's their monthly meeting, correct? Yes, their monthly meeting. And there was one item that was approved, and that was their annual memorial car show. Traditionally, it's in the Rec Grove Park, and they'll be coming forward to let us know their plans for Main Street. And so that was approved by their chamber, and there was some discussion about that, and other events that they're planning for the remainder of 2024. And then, Lake Councilmember Stransky was speaking of, Vice Mayor Gonzalez, Stransky, myself, went on a walking tour with city staff and members of the Caltrans, and we walked and looked at the different items that were on the Clean California Grant that will be funded. And we talked, we had discussion about what that's going to look like on the ground, in terms of what's happening over at City Park. We talked about the lights on Main Street. We talked about the banner that will be going in place on Main Street, potentially across East and West Oak, and the equipment that'll go in Babcock Park, and the renovation of the fountain. We talked about restroom upgrades. And at that point, we were a little, about an hour in, and Vice Mayor and I had excused ourselves, and Councilmember Stransky continued on with the group, and they went down to Rec Grove and discussed those improvements there. So, yeah, thank you. And I have no other, no other comments, other than I will follow up with city manager, just to get some, updated on what's happening with the, with the issue that was raised today, just to get some, some information.
Do you have an additional comment?
I just had a question, and I don't know if there's any public information regarding the old hospital site. Is there anything that we, or the public, should know about that's being?
Community Development is working with the applicant who purchased the property, and they're looking to, they're following along with the general plan, and then use element revisions, and they have a plan in place. And Dusty, you have the details, or?
This is in regards to the old hospital site?
Yeah. Are you able to share with us details of that plan?
So we haven't received, like, any conceptual drawing, or building plans, or anything like that. You know, what I, what my, what I've been led to understand is that the hospital foundation donated the property to this other medical group, and they're planning to make use of the site to establish medical offices, and they're brainstorming some other ideas. the site to establish medical offices, and they're brainstorming some other ideas as well, but we haven't received any, you know, building permits, or conceptual plans, or anything of any great detail that, that I can share. To match with what our city manager was articulating, the, the new property owners have requested a rezone to commercial, in order to support the, the future intended uses of the property, and we currently have that in, in the administrative draft that we'll be bringing forward to council later.
All right, and then one clarification. In the past, we haven't always opened it up specifically for public communication after council reports, but I asked, I asked Jim, our city attorney, clarifying question, because it came up in another board that I was on, and I just want to make sure that you're welcome, the public is always welcome to comment on council communications and announcements. So with this agenda item, is there any public comment? All right, do we have any good and welfare today?
I do. Sober Reds selling their, their tri-tip, and I think that's on the 20, I think it's the 26, I think, or 20?
I think you're right.
Yeah, I think that's, but they're selling the tickets right now, so.
So who wants some tri-tip?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jerry.
Public Works was out in the city today, installing new stop signs at the corners of North Street and Laurel. I have a couple of neighbors who have already alerted me that they are so happy, and they feel much safer walking. The stop signs recently installed up at Pine and Maple have been a success, so I have high hopes for North and Laurel. Thank you, Public Works.
All right. All right, and with that, it is 7, it's like 7:42, and we'll convene to closed session, where we'll have two matters before us. One is a conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Act 54957.6, Brian Bender, city manager, and Patrick Clark. It's with the employee organization. And then the other item is the follow-up annual performance evaluation of city manager. We will report back into open session if we have anything to announce. Thank you all for coming this evening.
Okay, I have two items to report out in. The city council met in closed session to discuss the negotiations, and we gave direction, but there were, there was no.
Action taken.
No action taken, thank you. And then on the second item, which is the city manager's evaluation, I'm reporting out that we met on March 27th, and gave a proposed offer to our city manager. The motion was made by Vice Mayor Gonzalez, seconded by myself, and voted four to one. This evening, we amended the, the, the offer, and I have that before me. Do I need to read the whole thing? Do I need to read the entire change to the agreement? No. Okay, maybe I'll just point out the changes, because we already have the existing one. Okay, so there were a couple of points. The term of the agreement was extended, for his employment agreement was extended to January 3rd, 2029. His Section 3, Termination of Employment, Severance Pay, Section 3, see Paragraph 1, was amended from six months to nine months. Under Section 4, Compensation of Employee, city manager was given a one-time merit increase of $5,000, which will be applied to his employee's 457 retirement plan. Number two, upon exemplary evaluation at his five-year anniversary, employees shall receive an additional merit increase of $5,000. And then lastly, we striked the last sentence in the, under Section 4, which led us to our next, oh, and we took a vote on that this evening. It was four to one with Jerry making the motion, and Greta seconded the motion, and then four to one with Larry being the no. And then the next item was a motion to remove city manager Bender from the management bargaining unit, and Jerry made the motion, Greta seconded the motion, and it was a four to one vote with Larry being a no. In conclusion, I just want to state that unanimous, we took a vote, and unanimously, five zero, with Jerry making the motion, myself making the second on it, we voted five zero to give city manager unanimously a favorable evaluation, and to make a, to make a clear indication that, here it is right here, let me read it, oh, a vote of confidence in his satisfactory performance this year in his evaluation. And that concludes this meeting.
And it is 8:54.